Press that and that means you're wrong. Yeah, there.
Are we going to call the meeting to order?
Counselor Cirillo?
Here.
Counselor Mercia?
Here.
Counselor Kennedy?
Two questions.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's so nice to have you here. This is just a meeting to present that you are the new management for the Lowell Memorial Auditorium, and we're very, very excited about it, so thank you so much. And I have a couple of suggestions myself. So would you introduce yourselves so that the residents know who our new management team is?
My name is Pete Lally. I'm the president of Lowell Management Group.
Good evening, counselors. My name is John Shemley. I am one of the partners at Lowell Management Group.
My name is Jack Lally. I'm also a partner at the Lowell Management Group.
My name is Andrew Holden. I am also a partner at the Lowell Management Group.
Chris Dick, partner at Lowell Management Group.
Thank you. So let's just get right into the presentation, because you're the stars tonight, so that would be great. Thank you.
Peter, could we have one for the assistant city clerk? And I might say, Madam Chairman, I'm not unfamiliar with this group. And I will say that since I've been here since the beginning of time, I do know of their expertise because I've witnessed it. And it was unbelievable before, and I'm sure it'll be revived and brought back again because we had a lull in between that was rather disappointing. So I'm very happy to see that you got the bid. I'm very, very happy and excited about hearing about what's going to happen this evening.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you so much. We're really, really happy to be at the auditorium and to have the opportunity to do what we love to do with that building. It's such a, you know, one of the things that I've always appreciated but have come to appreciate even more is just how much that building means to everybody who in the community. And as you may know, I was at the building with Mill City Manager from 1999 to 2013, and it's good to be back. It's good to be home. I wanted to give you just a brief overview of our management team, some information on our operations, and some of our intentions in terms of booking and programming with the auditorium, and also some information on some of the outreach we're doing in the community with different organizations in terms of marketing, economic development, and so forth, and also bring to your attention one piece of legislation that affects the auditorium that is presently in committee in the House. The Lowell Management Group came together, myself and partners here. Dan Barubi is also a partner. He's not able to make it tonight. And we really wanted to form an organization that would really do justice to the auditorium in terms of, in all aspects, whether it be management of the facility itself, continuing the great work the city has done in updating the building and renovating it, but also bringing in some programmatic elements, too, that we felt would really help the building soar. And that's kind of the genesis of Lowell Management Group. Brings together myself, Jack Lally, who I've known since birth, who has been in finance in his career, Andrew Holden, who is a graduate of UMass Lowell and very familiar with the city, of course, Chris Dick, having a lot of ties to the community along with John and Trinity EMS and their ability to help us engage with the community as well. So all of us have strong ties to this community and a lot of love for that building. And what we've been able to do is also supplement our own partnership with team with some great expertise in bringing on some folks with good experience in marketing and booking and operations of the auditorium, and really put together a team that we feel is going to be quite strong. In a relatively short amount of time, we've been able to book some performances there that we're really excited about. The card that you have in front of you highlights some of those. We, as you know, started there July 1st and have had the chance to kind of ramp up some of the bookings for the fall. We hope that with the greater lead time that we have into 2019, that that pace is going to keep picking up. But we've seen some great results so far. Some country shows that we've been able to book, which Lowell Auditorium has always had a lot of success with, with country, a couple of theatrical shows. It's also, we've also continued to bring in all kinds of different entertainment. We've got Rudolph the Red News Reindeer, the musical, which will be coming. That was at the Schubert Theater the last two holiday seasons, and we've been lucky enough to bring it to Lowell for this December. The Boston Pops, which has been a longstanding and fantastic tradition at the auditorium, is continuing December 16th. So there's a brief overview of some of the things that we have going on in the fall, in addition to a lot of the other events that go on there on an annual basis that are not ticketed, which are equally important to the auditorium in terms of keeping it busy. So the Boys and Girls Club auction is coming up in November. We have Miss Massachusetts competition coming in in November as well. We just had a religious conference called the Hope Conference that was in. The building continues to be used quite heavily for naturalization ceremonies. Both the Boston Federal Court and the Lawrence Court are in there about a half a dozen times a year to bring in new citizens. So the building remains very, very busy for all kinds of reasons. Some of the, including your packet as well, is some more detail on that, on the calendar that gives you, like I said, not only an overview of the ticketed events, but just kind of what's going on on a daily basis and brings you through the end of the year. In the last few months, we've been able to get a lot of good communication going with the auditorium or between the auditorium and a number of organizations in town. Of course, the board of trustees at the auditorium have been a great help to us in helping us get up and running. The veterans have been meeting there. We had the chance to introduce ourselves to them at their meeting last night. We've been working with Henry at the Special Events Department on some ideas. He's been very helpful. We recently hosted a downtown business exchange in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, which invited a lot of businesses downtown to come and meet with us and have the chance to kind of get some synergy going so that we can find out who to best communicate with at different businesses, whether it be restaurants or retail and so forth. If we have shows, so that they're prepared for how many people we have and what time the shows are, what time they'd be starting, what time they'd be getting out, and kind of starting to get that synergy and information going between the auditorium and the businesses downtown, as well as parking and so on and so forth, all the logistics. We feel very strongly that we have a relationship with our patrons from the time they leave their house until the time they get back, and hoping that they find good parking, find a good restaurant, get to the show on time, and have a good, a great experience to tell people about and to further spread the word about the auditorium. The Repertory Theater is, of course, a great partner in the city as well, and we've met with them on a few occasions to make sure we're coordinating efforts on just the use of the building and the repairs and maintenance of the building. There's a lot of great work that's been done at that building over the last 10 years, and between ourselves, the trustees, the folks in DPD and the MRT, we're really hoping to continue that great work. The bids for additional handicap bathrooms just went out and are coming back to the city so that we can add some new bathrooms to the auditorium. There's also an initiative underway to fix the back-loading dock door and enable that to be able to service some of the larger shows that might come in. That's been an issue from time to time with particularly with some of the Broadway shows, and those design plans have been, I believe, completed, and that'll be going out to bid soon, so we're very excited about that. And we've also met recently with the Lowell Sun Charities and Golden Gloves to make sure that that's getting ready for Year 67, I believe, which will be starting in January. So some great things, great things coming on. We've got some exciting plans for, particularly for 2019. We're able to book some things into the first half or the second half of 2018 fairly quickly, but putting together a great strategy, I think, for 2019. We've already booked some things that we can't yet announce. I can tell you later when the cameras are off. But we're bringing back some of the Broadway to the auditorium, which has always been a great mainstay of that building, some other concerts and so forth. So in addition to those events that are recurrent in there throughout the year that are as well a mainstay of the building. So we're very excited about what we've been able to do so far. Very excited about being at the building and just knowing all the great things that we're hoping to do there, and it's a great venture for us, and we really appreciate the opportunity to do it and thank the council and the city and the residents and the veterans for allowing us that opportunity. We hope to make you very proud. There is also one other thing that I wanted to just bring to your attention that's also included in the packet, is some information on a bill that's in committee in the House which pertains to Class A casinos, and Class A being the bigger ones, the one in Everett and Springfield. In 2011, part of the legislation that was passed in the state enabled the performing arts centers that are either nonprofit or municipally owned and considered impacted by the Class A gaming facilities to have a half a percent of gaming revenue go to a fund that would help those facilities compete with the casinos where they'd be investing in entertainment. Casinos have a great advantage over performing arts centers to bring in entertainment because they can afford to pay a lot more. And this was a way to help mitigate that. And for the last eight, seven years, that legislation has been in place, but we haven't had Class A gaming until the Springfield Casino opened up just a few weeks ago. In around the same time that that casino opened, there became some legislation that would make that funding not so definite and basically hold it subject to appropriation in the Mass Cultural Council. So I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention because it was not the intent of the legislation to have that be diverted elsewhere. It really is a great resource potentially for the auditorium, as well as Springfield Symphony Hall, the Hanover Theater in Worcester, the Zeitarian Theater in Bedford, Lynn Auditorium, among others. So we're hoping that this, getting the word out and hoping to keep things as they are rather than potentially handicapping our venues from being able to compete with some of these casino entertainment that may be coming to the state. So I just wanted to give you some information on that as well. And also would love any questions or anything about the auditorium or about our plans or about anything we've mentioned.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. One thing that always got me was we like to see the restaurants that have spent their money to believe in Lowell to be here, and we have some of the greatest places downtown. And it was always sad to see that they opened from 9:00 to 5:00 or 9:00 to 6:00, and that was the end of that. And it always was, made sense to me, anyway, to coordinate with the auditorium so that when they had events, it would be a night out for many, many people to go and have a bite to eat before they went to the auditorium or after when it got out. So to coordinate the auditorium to the programs and shows that had taken place with the restaurants downtown so that they might say to their staff, "You know, there's so many events, and this is how we're going to do the schedule so that when they get out, we're open and we're going to make that money." And then that's word of mouth that would spread. That is so tremendous to have that coordination and that partnership between the venues downtown, the restaurants, and the auditorium. So to think that you're going to, you know, focus on that aspect, that is so wonderful. So I'm very proud that I'm hearing this because it was always in the back of my mind that I've said time and time again long ago, not after you were gone, but be that as it may. You're back now, and I'm so happy. I do have another concern, and it always, and Karen Cirillo, Counselor Cirillo, brought it up as well because I think it's that important. What is happening to the loading dock door? Is it, is it big enough to, has it been expanded to allow the big venues to take their equipment in? Where are we sitting with that? What happened?
That is, we've got some, and I know Counselor Mercia, you and I have talked about this for a better part of a decade. It, we're finally seem to be getting to the point where there's funding available, and that's been in part from the Mass Cultural Facilities Fund. There's been a design phase, an architecture phase that's ongoing to be able to bring the height of that door, which the back-loading dock door height is about seven feet, I believe, and it really is somewhat restrictive, as you say, to be able to bring in some larger shows, particularly when we get into Broadway programming where they have big set pieces that just aren't able to fit. And so the project involves not only raising the height of the exterior door to around 10 feet, but then coming across the hallway to the opening that goes to the stage is only a little bit higher than the exterior door, so that the plans include raising that height as well. So I know the next project that'll be undertaken at the auditorium or the handicap bathrooms, it'll be built towards the Hall of Flags on the same level as the first-floor concourse. And it's my understanding that after that, the loading dock is going to go out to bid as well. So we're very excited about that.
Because that's important. Imagine coming so close that you're going to get this venue, but they, but it stopped because they can't get their equipment in. How sad is that? So it's very important.
Yeah. And the auditorium's stage is large enough to handle those shows in most cases.
Yes.
And the theater has the technical capability to do those in most cases, but as you note, there have been times over the last 20 years where there have been, you know, like I say, particularly Broadway shows where they just couldn't fit the set pieces in the building, and sometimes they're able to cut those down and still perform the show in a slightly altered way, but there were some cases where they just couldn't do the show at all. So we're excited to be removing that barrier, literally and figuratively, to doing those shows. So, and to your previous point about the restaurants, we hear you loud and clear, that's something that we're, as we said, we co-hosted within conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce for that meeting, and we're hoping to continue that communication to be able to make sure that we're giving everyone a great night out, not just, it's not just about the show, that's a piece of it, but being able to go to downtown and enjoy the restaurants and other amenities is an important part of that piece, too, from our customer service end.
You used to, did you have another venue that you did in Lexington?
Yes, Cary Hall in Lexington.
That's right. And every time we would, years ago, hear the ads on WCAP, it killed me because they weren't becoming, they weren't coming here. So we want to get the same thing over here.
Andrew heads up our booking, and he's been doing a great job of getting some great shows in, not only over the next couple of months, but into next year, and we're very excited about it.
Yeah, thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris and I, just to your question, Madam Mayor, Chris and I had a conversation today with a limo company that we're all familiar with, and they're asking us to put together a package so that many, many of the restaurants downtown can line up with a limo service that we can offer a night out with the theater, whether it be Broadway, whether it be, we've got some great stuff coming up that he'll tell you about, like you said. However, we want to bring everybody downtown, and what better way to do it by partnering with some other businesses in the area. If this is just the beginning, Peter, you don't know about this because it just happened a couple hours ago. They would like us to put together limo restaurant theater packages where we bring people from the suburbs into downtown Lowell to do exactly what you're talking about.
That's beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. So there, with the, with the college here, there are many young people. So are you talking with the young people to see, you know, to say, "Hey, you know, there are fantastic shows in Boston that are kind of really hip and awesome. What do you want to see here in Lowell?" Are you doing outreach in that way, going to maybe some events at UMass Lowell and other areas in the city, just talking with the residents? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, and we have a number of touch points with both Middlesex and UMass Lowell. MCC has, for many years, hosted their celebrity forum there, and we're hoping to do whatever we can to help them continue. I think they're in year 21, and hopefully many more to come. We also have a great street team presence that is putting the word out for all over the campuses. I've had the opportunity to teach in the music business program at UMass Lowell for about the last dozen years, and that's been a great opportunity to bring in some interns and so forth. In fact, that's how Andrew and I came to know each other, was he was in that program. Same is true of another one of our talent buyers, Eric Ranio. John Higgins, who is our box office manager, was a graduate of UMass Lowell. Dan Barubi, one of our partners, is a graduate of UMass Lowell, and I'm sure I'm forgetting some others who have that. So there's a synergy from a standpoint of hoping to bring in folks to performances, but also with the colleges, it's a great opportunity for us to be able to bring young people into the organization, whether it be through interns or on into jobs, and really give, you know, kind of a full circle for people that are coming here for education and employment and so forth. It's really been a real asset to us, and we hope that that continues to strengthen.
I'm actually a fan of big shows, so I look forward to seeing that helicopter and Miss Saigon coming down.
Funny you mention that because that is one of the shows that wouldn't fit because of, now, I don't know that Miss Saigon is going to come here.
Right. That's what I was thinking.
They often play for like two weeks at a time in Boston, but that was one that was absolutely out because that helicopter.
Right, exactly. Now that the loading dock door is going to be enlarged, I'm hopeful. Yes. Go ahead. Yep? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we just go back to the legislation for a minute? If I understood you correctly, the current legislation, which would be enforced, would be that 0.5% of the gross would go to...
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. 0.5% of the gross would go to those other venues, and how is, how is that money dispersed?
That's yet to be determined. That would be, from what I understand, through a process that Mass Cultural Council would develop, which has not yet, from my understanding, been developed. So it kind of was enacted in the legislation in 2011, and for the last seven years, because there was no Class A gaming, it kind of took a backseat, but now all of a sudden it's come back. So that process, from what I understand, has not yet been determined.
Okay. Because the legislation does not, is not specific to that?
It doesn't specifically address that, correct.
And so what we need to be concerned about is other legislation that's pending that would be, or that's in, that might change that formula?
That's correct. And that's what, it's House 4578, it's, and there's a copy of a letter that gives you some information about that. There's a coalition that was put together of performing arts centers in 2011, of which I'm a member, to advocate for all of the, it comes down to mostly secondary and tertiary market performing arts centers that would really feel, not that the Boston venues wouldn't, you know, it certainly isn't a level playing field, no matter what geography your venue is in, when a casino can come in and pay two or three times what you're able to do. But this organization has stayed together and has kind of been keeping an eyeball on these, just these types of things, to make sure that we're aware of anything that changes. As we know, the state is a partner to the casinos, so the argument from the casinos is often, "Hey, we can all make more money if we do this." And we just want to see that the intent of the legislation when it was originally written continues to give some of that protection to these performing arts centers, which are really vital to all of these downtowns of not just Lowell, but these other cities that I mentioned that have other performing arts centers.
Okay. And Counselor Mercia mentioned some improvement, some capital improvements at the facility. And I know that in very recent years, we've done several improvements there, but the restrooms are tired, and there's the opening to bring stuff in. What is the timeline for that? When would the restrooms be complete? And I guess the other, the opening would need, we're waiting for funding on that, right, before...
I believe there's funding available for that. I think that the intent is to get the bathrooms done first, which has gone out to, there's been, from what I understand, a general contractor that has been selected, and now they're going for subbids, and that hopefully there would be construction on that sometime in January. That may, of course, construction schedules being what they are, that may not quite hit that mark, but we're hoping that it would be January, February, so that we've got a little bit of wiggle room in the calendar to be able to move around that. From what I understand, the plan, the construction plan would not hinder our, you know, we've got bookings all the way going forward throughout 2019, so we would have to make sure that those weren't impacted. The other bathrooms that are below the Hall of Flags would stay open. They're being renovated as part of this plan as well, but while they built the handicap bathrooms up on the concourse level, they do that first and then move down into the bathrooms below the Hall of Flags to be able to freshen those up. But it looks to be that best intentions are that it would be, construction would happen sometime in January.
Okay. And I know Counselor Mercia also brought up the idea of cooperating with the restaurants, and I think that's a great idea to do, and the more we can develop that, I think, the better off we are, whether we do it through the chamber or through the division planning and development or whatever. But certainly, I think restaurants, if they know what the, what the schedule is at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium, they can plan accordingly based on that night and what they anticipate that night. But I think that that just helps everybody because ultimately, you know, the auditorium is an economic development engine for the downtown, but it also is part of the quality of life here in Lowell, which makes it be important. Last year, we had several meetings throughout the year with different people about the auditorium because I think most members of the city council were not happy with the amount of activity that was going on there. We felt like it could be a lot, be used a lot more, and, you know, I've talked to some of you individually, so what I often point as an example is Lynn Auditorium, where they have, you know, almost 40 shows, you know, quality shows a year, which I think is just a great thing. And I think, you know, they have an auditorium that is, that would compete with ours. It's a little smaller, but it's in the same, you know, it's in, it's in the same class. And so, so I think we should be, I think Lowell is a lot, it's a lot easier to get to Lowell than it is to get to Lynn, unless you live right outside of Lynn. So I think we should be able to compete with them very well. And during those meetings, we had Peter Arcella come up and tell us how Boarding House Park ran, and we had Jamie from Lynn Auditorium come up and speak to us as well. And we had probably half a dozen meetings, and I think the city manager at the time was Kevin Murphy, and Jim O'Donnell from the trustees was there, and maybe five or six, five or six other people. But what we came away with was that in order for there to be enough shows, we need to have, there needed to be a cushion of money so that we would end up being able to absorb a bad show or a show that was, that took... the restaurants, and I think that's a great idea to do. And the more we can develop that, I think, the better off we are, whether we do it through the chamber or through the division planning and development or whatever. But certainly, I think restaurants, if they know what the schedule is at the Lowell Auditorium, they can plan accordingly based on that night and what they anticipate that night. But I think that that just helps everybody because ultimately, you know, the auditorium is an economic development engine for the downtown, but it also is part of the quality of life here in Lowell, which makes it be important. Last year, we had several meetings throughout the year with different people about the auditorium, because I think most members of the city council were not happy with the amount of activity that was going on there. We felt like it could be a lot, be used a lot more. And, you know, I've talked to some of you individually, so what I often point as an example is Lynn Auditorium, where they have, you know, almost 40 shows, you know, quality shows a year, which I think is just a great thing. And I think, you know, they have an auditorium that is, that would compete with ours. It's a little smaller, but it's in the same, you know, it's in the same class. And so I think we should be, I think Lowell is a lot, it's a lot easier to get to Lowell than it is to get to Lynn, unless you live right outside of Lynn. So I think we should be able to compete with them very well. And during those meetings, we had Peter Arcella come up and tell us how Boardinghouse Park ran, and we had Jamie from Lynn Auditorium come up and speak to us as well. And we had probably half a dozen meetings, and I think the city manager at the time was Kevin Murphy, and Jim O'Donnell from the trustees was there, and maybe five or six, five or six other people. But what we came away with was that in order for there to be enough shows, we need to have, there needed to be a cushion of money so that we would end up being able to absorb a bad show, or a show that was, that took place, say, on a night where there was a blizzard and it just ended up tanking. And so I'm really excited about this team that's together, because I think this is a team of high-quality people, and I really have a lot of, a lot of faith that the auditorium is going to turn around. And I think that's good for everybody in the city. So I want to thank you all for stepping forward on this one, because it's, I think it's, you know, that facility is really, really important to downtown. I think maybe, maybe more than some people realize. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to your point about the restaurants, we, you know, that's something that we're definitely focused on in the shows that we hope to bring in. We realize that the investment that the city makes in the auditorium, both in terms of ongoing operations and the renovations and so forth, is largely, you know, to stimulate economic activity, and we feel it's, we understand our responsibility in reaching out to organizations and restaurants to make that happen. So hear you loud and clear on that.
And I think, you know, just to echo what the chairman said, I like, I like big shows too, big music shows. I'm not sure we have exactly the same taste, but I like them as well.
Now's the time for requests, right here, as the guy.
I'm not much of a country western person, or a country person, but I, but I know I'm probably in the minority in the city in feeling that way, so.
We aim to have something for everybody, and we got some information about a show that if I don't get booked, both of my kids are going to throw me out of the house. So we got something from five-year-olds all the way up and beyond. So we're trying to do our best to keep the place busy.
Okay. I spoke with air traffic controller, and they said they would love to come to Lowell. And yes, Henry?
If I may, just a point on the, in terms of outreach and working with businesses. Through the Cultural Affairs and Special Events Office, we do the likelool.com website. We work with Economic Development to maintain a database of all the downtown businesses, restaurants, and others. And we do a weekly email blast that lines up and shows all these folks, all the events that are coming up, so they can plan accordingly, particularly when an event comes that there are, you know, several thousand people that are out and about for lunch or for dinner. So we work to make sure that downtown businesses are aware that there's a lot of good things and a lot to like about Lowell.
Thank you, Henry. So, yes, I think that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, Mr. Mayor, to your point as well, and Peter brought it up a second ago. One of the reasons why I got involved personally with this team is Peter's an out-of-the-box thinker. From the, from the contract that we made with the city, so that when we make money, the city makes more money. And that's what we wanted to, we wanted to grow this business through ourselves, and we wanted to grow the business for the betterment of the city. So that's a great thing, number one. Number two, we're not going to just use the inside of the auditorium. We're also working on venues and working on projects and programs that are going to use the outside of the venue, whether it be with Folk Fest, whether it be with Winter Fest, whether it be with a food truck festival. We've got a lot of stuff that we have in the works as well. And he's also talking to many of our ethnic groups here in the city. He's got a big multi, multicultural event that is happening, that I don't know whether you're allowed to say it yet, if you know what I'm talking about, but that should, according to the people that are helping us do this, that should sell out. So he's an out-of-the-box thinker, and I think that's what we need here in Lowell. We need some young blood, we need some younger people to, to, you know, to Karen's point, we need some younger people to help revitalize the downtown. And that's exactly what we're trying to do here.
Yes. Oh, go ahead, Councilor Merser.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And I'm not surprised that Mike, that Pete O'Leary is thinking outside of the box, because he get trained by three wonderful amigos, three amigos. They were, they were just wonderful. And you learnt, you started out at the bottom, worked your way, and got all that knowledge. And look where you are today. I'm so proud of you.
You're right. We, I really had, I started, my first day at the auditorium, it was around this time of year in 1999, and I was 25 years old, and Tom McKay gave me a great opportunity to learn a lot of things. And very happy to be working with, Terry McCarthy is now, of course, with Los on Charities and heading up the Golden Gloves, and having the chance to work with him on that is exciting. So you're right. So a tip of the cap to those three.
And Leo Krieger, three of the best. You learn from the best. So I'm not surprised. Thank you.
I had had many residents message me in excitement about you now managing the auditorium, because I think that this change has not only revitalized the community, but it's revitalized the residents, and they're excited about what you're bringing to the city, and the shows, and what you're going to be doing to the auditorium. It's all this wonderful, wonderful, exciting time. And I really look forward to, I look forward to seeing shows there, and it's just, it's just a whole wonderful thing. So thank you. You're good?
Yes.
Okay, well, I will call the meeting to adjourn.
So before we adjourn...
Oh, sorry.
Let me just say that I think, I think this, this subcommittee is excited. I think everybody on the city council is excited to have this team on board. If there's anything that you need from us going forward, please don't hesitate. And maybe in a couple of months, I'll be in a position to watch that legislation to make sure nothing bad happens.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
So this will be a report of progress?
Yes.
Because it'll be progressing all the time.
Oh, yes. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Did we adjourn?
Good job.
Did we adjourn? Seconded, first. I'm seconding my own.
First and second.